All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our study session February 9th, 2016. Just a quick comment, does anybody know what the significance of February 9th is? Where were you in 1964 on February 9th?
Costa Mesa High School.
It was the night the Beatles played on Ed Sullivan.
Oh, really?
For the first time.
Yes, I remember that, I was yesterday.
I remember it, just like yesterday. Art, not Arlene.
I remember that.
On our black and, on our black and white TVs.
Yeah, we were in math class, too.
You were in math class during Ed Sullivan. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Director James Ferrellman.
President.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Uten.
Is due to be late.
Thank you. Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comments, this is the time set aside for persons in the audience to make comments on items not listed on the agenda, other items they'll have an opportunity to speak for items on the agenda. Mr. Mosher, you've indicated a...
Yep, thank you, President Schaefer and members...
Regular drill.
Thank you, President Schaefer and members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher and returning to the normal business of the board. I am happy to have my residential trash collection being paid for by the city of Newport Beach at no additional cost to me, so I should not perhaps be bringing this issue up or making the point of it, but I think the comment I made at the last board meeting is a valid one. If one looks at the district's operating code, it appears that when it was created in 1944, that it was created with either a state or county mandate to handle all matters related to trash and sewer services within its district, and it has a single district boundary. And the fact that in, on the trash side of things, it's now restricted to curbside residential collection and only in certain areas, according to the operations code, has implied that that is a totally voluntary decision on the part of this board that could at any time be changed without consulting Lafco or anyone else. And if the board's understanding of that is better than mine, that's fine, but if it's not, I think that would be a reasonable thing to study at a future study session with the actual authorization of the district is and how that has changed over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You mean the district boundaries?
No.
The operation code just...
We've just got a decision to limit trash collection to just residential.
Oh, oh, okay.
And only in certain areas.
So, we have the authority to do commercial industrial trash collection.
Yeah, we've known that.
We know that.
And trash collection for Newport Beach residents that are inside our boundary, which we do somewhat.
Sure.
Whether it would not take Lafco's approval, that I don't...
I'm not sure on that.
They may, you're not allowed to exercise a latent power, and for us, a latent power would be the streets sweeping. So, if we were to exercise streets sweeping, we probably would have to go to Lafco.
Yeah.
I think we gave up our latent powers when special districts were given two seats on the Lafco board, and that's when Arlene came after. So, I don't know whether they would look at the rest of the trash collection as a latent power because we have not exercised our power in such a long time.
Yeah, I guess part of the comment would be that it's not a battle we want to take on right now.
Right.
I mean, is that something, it's worth, I agree with Mr. Mosher, I think it's worth at least discussing at a study session in future date. I saw Scott busy typing, so I think he's got that.
And maybe Alan look into it a little bit further.
Yeah, I think so.
Because we've discussed this over the years.
Yes, we have, quite often.
Okay.
The city's been reluctant, obviously.
They have been reluctant.
Yeah, so.
Because you remember, we came to them and we told them, like 10 years ago, they could increase their revenue.
Yes.
That's one of the reasons they made those steps, was because we have banging on the door.
Yeah.
And kind of shamed them into at least getting a non-exclusive franchise where they had a franchise deal.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, anyone else?
We may have some comments to develop.
Any other, anything you'd like to?
Well, there, I've been involved with it for about 13 years.
We talked about commercial one time, and then we talked about residential only, that
cannot go into the commercial side because residential bin service, for example, bulky items, and providing them an array of services, like we do with the single family residential homes, which the city wasn't interested in doing that far. But that, that kind of got, Jim, I think you were involved in that when you went to the city, and they weren't too happy about that either, mainly because of the franchise tax, and they call it the city tax. It's a significant amount of money that they get every month from the eight or nine haulers here in town.
And that's, I would assume that's gonna go up with the changes coming with the organics, won't it?
Well, just to give you an update, they met with, I think, three or four haulers of the eight showed up at a city meeting, and they told each hauler that you need to come up with a plan. And so, the haulers came back to the city and they said, "Okay, what are the parameters? What would you like us to do?" Well, the city didn't know.
Yeah.
So, we're kind of waiting for the city to give us some specifications or plans of what they want. Now, what's going to happen, I'll give you my prognosis, is that where food scraps are generated from Costa Mesa, companies that do not have a composting facility or anaerobic digestion plant, they're gonna let them go. They're gonna, they're gonna discontinue service if they have to get food scraps.
That's good.
So, what's gonna happen, instead of...
It's gonna reduce the...
These companies, the restaurants in town, are gonna have a hard time, their rates are gonna go like this, because they're only gonna have one or two companies to treat them.
Okay.
And the city, city decided they did not want to regulate rates of service when we were with them, but it was in December.
Dean, this...
When you say they're gonna, I'm sorry, when they're gonna let them go, the city's gonna say to them, "You don't have a plan, you're out of it."
Yeah, if you don't have a plan, you're not gonna be able to serve those particular customers.
Dean, wasn't January 1st the deadline for the city to submit to the state?
It's of next year.
Of next year, okay, but, okay, okay.
So, we can expect something from them about late November from the city?
Yeah, yeah.
I've got a lot of building today, I think, I think I suppose we give them a letter or some kind of plan here in the next few weeks, I gotta work on that. Of course, we have a plan, but it's not inexpensive, and Scott and I have actually talked about this a little bit, we cannot pick it up with trucks services in the residential, because you pay by tonnage, right? So, it's gotta be a separate route on the commercial side, right? So, it's something we don't get into at 24 hours, we have to plan and buy equipment and so forth and so forth.
Is the city leaving money on the table by, by not limiting the number of franchisees, like the one or two or three?
I don't think I can answer that, I don't know. We do have a significant tax, is it 16% now, Scott?
Yes.
It's a big number.
16 or 17% is up there.
Nice.
And Newport Beach has a significant city tax, too, on the commercial haulers.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to our items of study, and first item, we're so pleased to welcome back our good partner from Orange Coast College, Mr. Mike Carey. Mike, welcome back.
Thank you, happy to provide this update. As you know, it's been a long time coming. Is any of you over there?
No.
So, as you might recall, our recycling center project is part of a larger master plan for the entire college, and that master planning and EIR has been out on the street for quite some time. We were, noticed that we had some potential historical structures on campus, that we had to do a very extensive and expensive study to determine the historical significance of these buildings that were constructed by an architect of note in the mid-fifties, mid-century, Richard Neutra collaborated with Robert Alexander when we converted the campus from the Santa Ana Army Air Base to the OCC campus. It was determined that we had 12 potentially historical buildings on campus, that several of those we're looking to remove. After that historical overview study, our EIR was approved and we signed off in December with no challenges to it. Fortunately, we had no injunction filed to extend that process, so that allows us to proceed with our recycling center project. We are also working with the city, we're in the process right now of having our final construction documents reviewed tomorrow. The city is signing off on their portion of our project this week. Most of our project is out of the city's purview. The one thing that they do have authority over is the curb cuts that we need to do, providing entrance and exit. Whoops, I hit the wrong button. Okay, so, we had a, we have a deceleration lane, this is, so this is Adams Avenue, Pine Creek here is the main entrance to the college on Adams. When we first did our plans, we had an acceleration lane out onto Adams. When we first went to the city with that, they, they were against having an acceleration lane, they were worried about landscaping and sightlines as you're pulling out, as well as the traffic traveling on Adams, waiting to turn left on Fairview, they were concerned about an acceleration lane, of people exiting the recycling center while other people are trying to get in the right-hand lane to turn right on, on the Fairview. So, at the city's request, we removed that acceleration lane. When we went back to the city in, it must have been October, they said, "Oh, you guys should have an acceleration lane exiting the recycling center." So, that's why it's not in the drawings here, but we added it back, so we, luckily the work had been done, so there will be an acceleration lane exiting the recycling center.
Typical for plan check.
Right, yeah.
Done it twice.
We've already done some preliminary work in advance of our project. Over the last six weeks, we've, we had to relocate this, this is the softball field for OCC. The home run fence had gone out about like that, we've relocated it to contain the perimeter of the recycling center. We're starting work on our new electrical switch house, yeah, right around here, it will be providing all of the electricity for the recycling center. And we, I don't know if you've noticed, as you travel along Adams, the college has added one megawatt of solar panels in the Adams lot right here, which will tie into the solar, actually, it's just shy of one megawatt, that's the maximum we're allowed to put in as a campus. The recycling center will be providing the balance of that to equal one megawatt, which will, in total, provide 50% of the electrical needs of our campus and save $50,000 a month in electric, in our electric bill, yeah, so it's a big project. Those are, they're wrapping up that solar project this week. So, again, I mentioned we're, our constructability documents are under final review tomorrow. Bid date is scheduled to, we hired a construction manager who's already started and on board, Kitchell. Our, we're scheduled to go to bid on March 23rd, bids are scheduled to close on April 20th, construction to begin end of May, and last approximately one year. Right now, it's scheduled, scheduled completion mid-May 2017, and we're trying to get that date pushed up a little bit to kind of coincide with our anniversary of Earth Day, so if we could get that open on April 22nd, 2017, that would be good. We're going, again, as a reminder, we're, right now, we have eight parking spots in the recycling center, serving over 300 customers a day. This will be expanded to 45 parking spots, with an administrative office with a community meeting room, roughly the size of this room, actually, probably a little bit wider, that we could hold public community meetings in, two separate sides for customer transactions, two cashiers. We're gonna have two classroom buildings out here, featuring organic gardening demonstrations and composting demonstrations as well. That's roughly how the front of it will look. Those are all CRNR bins right there. And that's just the office layout, and those are the, the classroom buildings.
Mike, can you go back and show the front again and show where the parking is?
Okay, so, this will be the, like, administrative building with the cashier booths right here. This is parking on both sides for customer loading and unloading. And we'll have two separate, they're almost identical bays, it'll be serving the same purpose, just to break up the flow of customers, they'll each handle paper cans, bottles, batteries, cooking oil, all of that.
That won't be located on Adams, though, that's behind it?
Nope, that's on Adams.
That's on Adams, right there, really?
Adams is right there.
The other stuff, the classrooms, were behind it?
Yeah, the classrooms are behind me. So, there's the front, and that was right here, and then the classrooms are behind, face right adjacent to the Adams parking lot.
Yeah, Mike, one more question, will you guys have to close down at all during construction?
No, no, that's, that's the challenge of the construction managers, to keep us open all, all during that time. Our students are very, since they're the financial beneficiaries of our program, they're interested in us remaining open.
Okay, good.
Have to admit, I'm a little nervous about breaking ground on a multimillion dollar facility while the secondary materials markets are tanking right now, but...
The problem, the problem, if you don't stay open, is people might find other locations that you don't want.
Absolutely. We don't want, we can't, yeah, we can't have that, that's right. The only other recycling center now that was closest to us was outside of the city of Costa Mesa in Santa Ana on Fairview and MacArthur, that's just recently closed as well.
Are you offering any courses that are related to all of these programs?
We are, we're building, that's the reason to have the, the classroom portion in there. There was a grant-funded curriculum program that Irvine Valley College, Golden West College and Santa Monica College had started. Once the grant ran out, Orange Coast funded and took over the program that will be taught out of those classrooms, and I'm teaching the first class of, of that program right now, it's actually, tomorrow night's the second session of it.
Nice, good. So, we can start calling you professor?
That's what they all call me anyway. That's the name of the real professor.
One other question, you know, the, the classrooms, do you rent those out? Say we wanted to put on a composting, would...
That is the goal, and that's what I want to do, I want to have community programs in there as well. That's absolutely part of, part of the project for a community ed program like yours and ones that we would offer at the college, absolutely.
Yeah, they have parking for that.
Forty-five, forty-five.
Yeah, the largest parking lot on campus is adjacent to it. And this will, actually, this whole project will be the first lead building and project on our campus, and the, the whole facility will be net zero energy, just with the solar that we have just at the recycling center, not including in the Adams parking lot, is enough to support the entire functionality of the recycling center, which will be out of, with the classrooms, it's about a five and a quarter acre of site.
Do you know what lead you're heading towards, gold, platinum, silver?
It, we're right on the border of silver and gold, so if, if we can get some more innovation credits, that'll be good. We're doing things like adding, we're having men's and women's locker rooms and showers in there to support commuting and things of that nature. And a lot of natural daylighting in the office.
Mike, you, you were talking in the beginning about the historical buildings, you're not removing any historical buildings, is it just part of the whole EIR that was...
We are removing some.
Relocating or removing?
Removing. Now, the ones that are getting removed are more of row classroom buildings, I don't, actually, I'm presenting that in class tomorrow, but I don't have the pictures of that. The iconic buildings that were constructed by Richard Neutra are our theater, our forum, our lecture hall.
The ones over by the, over by the theater, some of those buildings over there, isn't that what...
Right, the row classroom buildings.
Yeah.
We are removing some of those.
Oh, really?
But that's not part of your project?
That's not part of our project, but master planned as a whole, yep.
Oh, I see.
Everything's gotta be signed off, so.
Okay, yeah.
I have nothing historical.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, there's nothing over there.
When I was a kid, that's where the cows used to graze.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right there.
Yeah.
Mike, how is it, the volunteers, are the people who work there, are they volunteers?
I would, if it was volunteers, I'd be the only one.
Would you have enough?
Nobody volunteers any, unless they're court ordered to volunteer.
Will you have enough, if you...
I have three, or four other full-time staff and 26 part-time student employees.
Oh.
And we'll maintain that, that program.
It is?
It is, yeah. And I do have about 50% international students, which is great, because they, they pay a fortune to come and study here, and they're not allowed to work anywhere in the United States, except the college that they attend school at, so they're grateful for the jobs, especially when they're paying the local rents around here.
Oh, yeah.
I have one student who works for me who lives in the apartments across the street, they're paying $1,900 a month for a two-bedroom apartment.
Yeah, you have to start raising them.
Any other questions for Mike?
No, we're very happy, very happy.
That's all of them, yeah. Thanks to classrooms and raised planning beds, that we're going to participate with our horticulture department and food service and grow some of those food divisions.
I have a question. Dean, do we count their totals in our recycling?
Yep. So, what we report to you is what we have.
The question would be then, would, does the city count what Orange Coast College recycling, does the city count your numbers?
Remember, we asked, we've asked you this every time we met, almost, can we use their numbers to get us to 80%?
Yeah, the, the challenge for the, the city's end or your end is documenting where the material is coming from, because ours is not 100% Costa Mesa residents.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
We've had somebody come up with your word. We don't ask them that, right? The state doesn't require you to do that, you're our buyback center, we're requiring you to do that.
There are states, so, there's many times one state agency does not pay attention to where another state agency is.
Yeah, it's, you bring a computer monitor, we do.
Because down at Rainbow, they ask what city you're from.
Right, for the hazardous stuff, they have, they want to ensure Orange County residency.
Right.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks again for taking us last morning.
Before you go, before you go, would it be possible to have some kind of reporting for what residents of the district bring in, is that a possibility or not? I mean, that way we could get that, but I don't know if it's possible from your end.
I'm trying to think how we would track that unless it was a simple survey.
Well, when...
If it was institutionalized, you know, if we, if we collected it on a...
I don't know, maybe if somebody, if you were to ask if you live in Costa Mesa, if you live in Costa Mesa, they said yes, maybe, I don't know if you write down what they give you, but if we got a copy of that, that's something that we could package with our numbers.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where I was getting that, too, you know?
Might be something to think about.
Yeah, there, there might be a way to track that, because I'm tracking what we're generating internally as a campus, and I have to report that to the state, but I don't include the numbers that we get from the community. So, I have to do an equivalent of an AB 939 report for what we generate in-house.
I see. Okay. Somebody's giving money.
Thanks, Scott.
Can you come back and talk about the last...
Yes, Scott, break that down. Help him generate a question, huh?
You can ask my successor.
Because that could put us at a, a big recycling, if it just...
Depends on how the Cubs do.
They give you money.
I know, I mean, you say, what's it?
Organic recycling.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, in this agenda, we do not include the recycling reports as we usually do in the past, and, you know, hearing from Mr. Mosher's comments, and, you know, he makes a valid point, you know, that, because we know what the characterization study is, those numbers aren't gonna change, it's pretty much gonna be the same month after month, but if you see, if you see value in it, we will, we'll put it back in, if not, what we thought was more appropriate is, is to keep track of the organics program, and that's why we have the organics on agenda.
Do we send right out a report monthly, though? Do we still get a report monthly?
Yes, we do.
We just don't submit it to the state.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Mosher, any comments?
The comment I wanted to make, the report you do have now is showing how much tonnage is coming through the cans with green lids, and last Thursday, as I tend to do, I was at the Newport Beach Water Quality Committee meeting, and Ms. Judy Marquez, who you know from her presentations here about the ocean-friendly restaurant program, was there, and somehow the topic of log and anaerobic digesters came up, and I was trying to explain the district's green-litened can program, and I found I was unable to tell them for sure what the current status of the CRNR anaerobic digester facility was, and also, in the past or in the future, if that facility is not available, where the, where this tonnage showing in the report is going to at the present time, or in the past where it went to before the facility was there. I was embarrassed not to know that, but then I looked at the district website this morning, and I can't find the answer there either, so perhaps I should be clarified.
Sure. Right now, the material is taken to Victorville, and there, that is the, one of the only few facilities, correct me if I'm wrong, the only few facilities accepts food scraps. A lot of composting facilities in, in Southern California do not accept food scraps, and one of Victorville does. So, it's going to Victorville right now, so it is complying with the law of diverting green waste away from the landfills, so it's not going to the landfills, it's going to a composting facility where it's green recycled, and then, I think the AD facility's gonna go online in April?
April 8th.
April 8th, so.
Perhaps that should be, if the people putting their waste out in the green cans might be interested in where it's going and where it'll go.
The reason for the delay was Southern California Edison, wasn't it?
Edison was the biggest delay, and actually, Mr. Mosher's right, we, we had talked about putting that on the website, and we didn't want to discourage people, we had talked about the AD plant so much, because of the two or four month delay we had on startup, I think we wanted, didn't want to discourage people from doing the organic program.
Maybe after April, we can get it back on there.
Sure.
I think maybe, maybe Scott, we could put some pictures on your website, if you have that.
Yeah.
That'd be really cool.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, Jen, I am free.
Thank you, Mr. President, Ed Roberts. Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. Ed Roberts, I'll be presenting the Code and Enforcement Officer Report for January 2016. In summary, I initiated eight proactive scavenging investigations for the benefit of the board, under Scott's direction, and thanks to Liz's help, we've incorporated screenshots of maps to better acquaint the board members where these scavenging investigations are taking place, hopefully it's a benefit to you. And then, at the, as an attachment to my report, you'll see in the rear, there's also just an overview map of the city, showing the location of the scavenging operation. As I said, eight took place, I had a few people get away from me, so I was unable to contact them. No incidents of any, no, mostly cooperative folks. You'll notice that there's a, kind of been a proliferation of scavengers, you know, we went from 14 the month prior, down to eight, but I'm still noticing that the scavengers are starting to pick up on the north end of town, which is very unusual, I was accustomed to that, kind of in the State Street area, so I'll be watching that. I also noticed through our new gov system, a lot of people are starting to report scavengers, or observations of scavengers, so it seems the electronic reporting system is working well and people are embracing it. The way I address that, you know, folks will report something general, you know, I see scavengers. Um, the way I address that, uh, you know, folks will report something general, you know, I see scavenger on my trash hauling day Wednesday. So I'll, I'll park the vehicle, you know, at various locations throughout the residential tract and hopefully go scoot out where I can see them and, uh, contact them. Uh, I'm continuing to maintain a log, I continue to maintain, uh, track of whom I'm contacting, their names and identification. Uh, I, I don't, you know, that's not incorporated into this report, but should it be necessary for citation purposes or reporting to police department, be forwarded on to them. Um, moving on from scavenging, uh, trash container enforcement, uh, getting a lot more complaints again coming through the new GAV system. I, I think word has spread and people are liking it. So, uh, for the month of January, there were fifty-eight investigations that required issuance of a notice of violation to the, uh, the violating property and with complaints in all of them. So fifty-eight.
And, do you have any comments you can make about the fifty-eight? In other words, to do it better or, you know, uh, any comments as far as if, if you feel comfortable with the fifty-eight or you figure, you know, what could you do to change it?
Well, ma'am, um, I, I, I think the, uh, I personally, uh, in conversations with my supervisor Scott, uh, I, I think the district's approach on public education is very good. Um, the, the board's approach and, you know, encouraging contact with the resident, resident education is good. Um, most of the time, what, what's time consuming is me finding the resident at home.
Yeah.
Uh, while, in the time that I'm there. Uh, once I knock on the door and take a very citizen-friendly approach, you know, just make them aware of the situation. The, the verbiage on the notice of violation is very gently worded and it's educated. Um, so most of the folks just were oblivious, they just had no idea or, yeah, half the time it's just, look, I was on vacation for a week and they sat out there and I apologize for me a culpa and away it goes.
Do you think it would help if we get some kind of courtesy sheet, you know, just short things, they will, uh, sorry we missed you and wanted you to know that, blah, blah, blah?
Uh, well, that's certainly an idea. Uh, the, the way the noticing process works with us, we have two colored, we have door hangers or, I, I attach one to the door and I also like leaving one on the trash can. Um, we have a yellow tag, which is the initial notice of violation, brings the, the issue to the, uh, to the person's attention, tells them what they need to do to cure and any ramifications, should, should they feel they comply, what could happen. Um, our process is if they don't comply with the initial notice, we'll go into a secondary notice, which is a red tag. Um, and then we go right into the citation process. Uh, we can, you know, issue notice of violation to, uh, via letter if we like. Normally that will be reserved for an apartment owner, uh, an offsite apartment owner who has no idea what's transpiring at his property. So we give them an opportunity to cure, we'll send a notice of violation and, and ultimately the citation process. You know, there'll be issued a citation for failure to comply and to, to recoup our administrative costs. Uh, as far as, ma'am, you, you know, a letter, uh, you know, sorry we missed you, certainly an option. Uh, my, my approach is, is definitely to go door knocking. I, I'd like to door knock and I'll give many opportunities to, to make contact with the folks with a business card left and the telephone number. Um, and that, that, that's worked very well.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, but, you know, if, if the board would like me to revisit that, I, I certainly, you know, will do that.
No, I, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we have everything we should.
Okay, well.
It'll be interesting to see next month.
Right.
What, if the fifty-eight drops down or what?
Certainly, certainly. And, and just one thing of note too, I, I brought this to, uh, my supervisor's attention, Scott's attention. Um, sometimes, I've had about three instances of this. Um, and normally the, the sanitation district, um, it, it'll be a single-family residential neighborhood that abuts to a, a multi-family, you know, higher density zone. You know, I'm just going to say an apartment building. And, uh, folks are using our trash carts almost to, to cordon off the area or to preclude people from parking because there's, there's some sort of neighborhood dispute. So as a matter of fact, I was dealing with one of those on the east side and, uh, fortunately, same deal, the same approach, was door knocking, explaining, look, you know, I understand, but, you know, we're, we're caught in the middle and this is what our order specifies you do. Uh, and, and then we, we try to find resources for them, like with Scott's assistance, I refer, you know, unincorporated pocket of Orange County. I, I believe in the Santa Ana Heights area, I refer them to the board supervisors for, as, as far as parking prohibition or, uh, you know, permit parking and that kind of stuff. So we try to be a resource to them too, not just, sorry, you know, we're going to ignore your call and we'll try to help them out as best we can.
So our cans are multi-use, they're used also.
Yeah. Get back to, uh, parking ballers, you know? Really effective, but, uh, so.
That's really, that's interesting there. Um, hey, it's been a while since we've kind of really looked at the alleys. Is there any chance we could take kind of a, I don't know, the next couple of months, sort of, just have a look at the alleys and see how the alleys are looking when you're out there?
Be my closest, sir. Um, is there a specific alley that?
That, that area, remember Scott, that one area, that one alley where they wanted to put the signs up? It's been a couple of years ago, but I'm just curious to see how the alleys are looking.
Oh, I'll, I'll do direct patrol in that area, sir. Um, I, I know the east side alleys are always kind of tend to be a little problematic. Um, and I, I know, uh, I, I find a lot of violations out in the Royal Palm area as well.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
Yeah, we're mine.
That's what, down off of Baker.
Yeah, right up in my office, I've seen that a lot. Um, the other thing that's kind of interesting, I, I used to notice on, my trash day is Thursday. I used to notice on Tuesday and Wednesday, there were a handful of trucks that were always the same trucks, driving through, looking for stuff. I don't see those guys anymore. And I, I, you do, they're over your ear?
I, he's been around.
There's one guy, there's one guy that drives a, an old white Toyota minivan type thing, I don't know what he used to call. But I, he, the reason he drives around is because I have a bunch of people in my neighborhood that leave their newspapers behind for this guy.
Yeah.
You know? But some of the trucks, the state trucks and stuff, I haven't noticed them.
I, I see them out there, sir.
I bet you do.
You know, I, I, we, we reference like, you know, Mr. Tipton's an institution in Costa Mesa, but, um, I, I've dealt with Mr. Tipton and his sons often as a reference, one of the names. One of the sons lives a couple of properties over.
Uh.
Uh, Mr. Tipton pretty much focuses exclusively on scrap metal. Um, that, that's the, the nature of his business. Uh, most of these folks are, I, I've seen have gone relatively out of business because of the decrease in what they.
Yeah, I guess that's why.
Yeah, the scrap metal business is very rough. That's how Mr. Tipton explained it to me, he said, it's just, it's very hard to make a living off of that, so they're going in a, in a different direction.
Root, diverse type.
Right. Um, and, uh, I, I don't have any graffiti instances to report. Um, most of the trash carts, I found a couple uniquely marked ones, uh, just in the spirit of law, kind of leaving, they're, they're, they're marked as far as, you know, my trash cart as opposed to, um, I, I don't, I didn't consider graffiti. So perhaps I'll, you know, maybe if I see the person out on the street, I'm talking about not marking up our trash cans, it's great, you know, but it's certainly not criminal graffiti, it's just, you know, identifying whose car it is.
Beautification?
Beautification, yeah. Territorial trash carting.
There you go.
Uh, so that concludes my report. Uh, are there any questions from any members of board?
It's a good report.
Well done, as always, yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll dine for the state of the District Ad hoc Committee at date. Um, Jim and I met with staff, I don't remember the date, Liz, if you remember the date. Anyway, um, staff came up with, with a couple of, uh, scenarios for us. Um, one dealing with community meeting, uh, second option is video and postcard mailing. And then the third option was partnering with Mesa Water. Um, kind of in a nutshell, if we're going to do this, it's going to cost us some money. And they're all fairly expensive. I think probably the most expensive was the videotaping, I think we looked at that. We're looking at, you know, almost ten thousand dollars for video and almost ten thousand dollars, about ninety-three hundred dollars to do a postcard. Um, the third option, partnering with, with Mesa Water, um, I think the cost was one thing, but the logistics of it was, was the, really the hard part. You know, we have to conform with what Mesa Water, when they're due. So I, I think that option was kind of, I think, Jim, we kind of blew that off.
Yeah. Plus they've already, they've already done one this, not within six months or so, they've done one.
Um, the, the first option, having a community meeting, um, ranges, the range is anywhere from a thousand dollars to fifty-one hundred dollars. Uh, to have it at the Costa Mesa Country Club with, with a breakfast, depending on the type of breakfast and things like that. Um, but I wanted to, to bring up something that Arlene had mentioned to me about, we're going to be opening a new building relatively soon. And wouldn't it make more sense to tie this into the opening of the building? And to, to do it all at one time rather than have a couple of different things? So, um, I think that's kind of the direction I'm, would lean towards that. Jim, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, just combine, combine the two and, uh, we're, we're going to be doing a opening, grand opening anyway. So we might as well be as efficient financially as we can. And I think it would, you know, serve both purposes, personally.
Do you, do you think that we could do that this calendar year? I, I would think so, you know, with our.
You know, it, I, I, I would think so.
Yeah, I would think so.
Unless the escrow gets pushed out.
Or it, you know, attain improvements.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, you have to go through plan check on it.
Yeah.
Do you think it would be completed by, say, October, November?
Optimistic, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I.
I mean, I like, I like that idea a lot.
Sorry, I, I, I really thought it was.
The, the only limited thing we have would be parking because we only have like forty-five parking spots.
That's up to where they have to park. But you know, one thing that is good about this is that the idea is everybody wants to come see where we're at.
Yeah.
They want to see what it looks like, no matter if we're done or not done or whatever.
I like, I like the idea a lot.
We get more of an audience than if you just say, we're going to have a state of the sanitary district.
Yeah.
You'd, they come to see that, it's like a character.
We would only have to, our expenses would be just hors d'oeuvres or cokes or water or something.
Or whatever we're doing, yeah.
Whatever we're doing. That would be.
And advertisers can.
I think that, I think that's the direction we should, you guys should consider going in. But, um, we just have to kind of get our program set and then pick the date once it's, you know.
All right, then, um, at this point, we don't really need to meet then as a committee and we'll just kind of wait until we get closer to whatever opening or event or whatever we're going to do. Okay.
Does, does the staff think the same way?
Yeah. I think we kind of agreed, didn't we?
Okay, okay.
All right. Thank you. Uh, item five, the Christmas tree recycling?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, is this available to you in report?
Thank you, Mr. President, and so are board members. Um, as you know, CRNR provides free Christmas tree selection for residents three weeks after Christmas, where it's recycled and turned into mulch. However, when the AD facility comes available in April, it will be then turned into energy. Um, for two thousand and fifteen, we collected a total of four thousand seven hundred and nineteen trees, which reflects a seven point seven percent decrease from last year. However, despite the decrease, the total tonnage was eighty-two point four eight, reflecting a one percent increase from the previous year. And we've talked about this before because this was like, I believe, two thousand and thirteen had this issue. I think it's, people are buying fake trees and the people that are purchasing real trees are purchasing bigger trees that weigh more. So, you know, it reflects the decrease and the increase in this tonnage.
That's interesting.
Um, now, we did receive a moderate amount of complaints about this Christmas tree pickups, but it's important to note that we did have them stored from January fourth to the eighth. And, and it caused major delays with traction pickup. So I, I think it wasn't safe conditions for CRNR to pick up the tree.
Maybe instead of complaints, you could call them second requests.
Second request.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And the findings from previous four years can be reflected in the grasp below.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Previous years, have we counted that tonnage of trees into our recycling totals?
I'm looking to that.
Have we, do we? Okay, okay.
I know for the organic recycling tonnage, that was included for the month of December.
Okay, good.
It is interesting, when I look at this, the number of trees, deeply, I, I don't know whether it's fake trees or if it's, I have a lot of friends that just didn't even put a Christmas tree up this year. So I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how that bodes, maybe there was some sign of respecting the drought or something, not buying a tree.
Well, you know, some people were going somewhere else for Christmas and they decided, you know, why should I put stuff up?
Mm-hmm.
So, a series of things.
Not my. Okay, any other questions for staff? Thank you. Report. Item six.
Thank you, Mr. President, so again, is this available to you in report?
Thank you, um, just a brief synopsis of the meeting. Um, it was three presentations. The first one began with Malia Burden, who just pretty much reported that the information regarding AB eighteen twenty-six mandatory recycling, organic recycling, has been updated on the website. Um, and then we had another presentation from Derek, our Dr. Eric Handler from OC Environmental Health, who presented on Waste Not OC, which is a public-private partnership coalition group. And their overall vision of the group is to end hunger and reduce food waste in OC. And the third presentation, which was conveniently timed, was from our very own, uh, general manager, Scott Carroll, and, uh, PR Norris Mike Sola. And they pretty much presented on the district's organic recycling program and showcased the use of anaerobic digestion technology to convert food and yard waste into renewable energy. Um, we didn't have many questions after that. I'm assuming they were just too impressed with the presentation.
No doubt about it.
So, so it was a good one.
Is that how you saw it too? You didn't get a lot of questions?
Yeah.
That's a good program though, it's a good program to present.
Good. Any other questions for Elizabeth? Good, thank you very much. Um, item seven.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. President. So the past five, six years, uh, we've had the, the city of, uh, Costa Mesa maintaining our fleet. And if you've seen your staff report, our, our fleet has grown considerably the last couple of years, mostly because of acquiring the portable generators. Uh, but those, that equipment does still need to be maintained. Uh, recently, we've got, received an email from, um, the city saying that, um, a former president of Nathan's on our vehicles are on hold right now because they can't even get caught up maintaining their own fleet. Um, particularly their, their emergency vehicles, like the recent fire. And those are, are high priorities, mostly the president or, or, or other vehicle, which I understand. Um, but they just can't seem to get caught up. Uh, this is concerning to staff. Uh, while I understand the situation, right, but it is still, we have a fleet, it's important to maintain our fleet for the safety of our staff and for the public. And so, um, I, I put in my staff report a couple of options, uh, that you could consider. Uh, one is, is to go, again, reach out to, to Newport Beach or, or the Orange County San Francisco District, see if they're willing to maintain their fleet. Uh, the other option, which is actually the option I, I prefer, is, is more of a hybrid approach. And that is we would, uh, hire, um, vendors, qualified vendors, uh, generator vendors to maintain our generators. They would actually come out to the yard and, and make, do the PMs right there and then have, uh, either Newport Beach or OCSD, if they're willing, maintain like a half a dozen of our, of our vehicles. Because the back, the, the heavy-duty vehicles, the, um, the combination trucks, those are being maintained by the vendors. Uh, they come out to the, to the yard, you make, call them PMs. Any major repairs, we take it to the yard, everything's out in Anaheim. Um, so that, that seems to be working out well. Uh, the other third option is just, just do nothing and wait until the city of Costa Mesa gets caught up, but I think that's, that's, um, that's.
Does the city problem lack of manpower?
Yes.
And, you know, we, we had, and, and we had talked about Newport Beach unit before, but that's when we said, hey, we want to keep it within the city. But then my, my thought would be, uh, city back to Newport Beach, Orange County Sand.
Yeah, we ought to shop it between the two, let's see, see what the, the feel.
Newport Beach yard is, is, is not very far.
It's right there, yeah, it's right down the street.
Well, the Orange County Sand District's not that far.
No, it's not, and that's not a good, another good option.
Do they do, do they do any other cities in Orange County Sand, do they? Okay.
I don't know specifically what, but I know they do.
I think it'd be interesting to shop it to see what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I do too, and I think if we're going to shop it, let, I, just for comparison.
Yeah.
Go to the county and go to the city of Newport.
Yeah.
But also check on the private vendor who can maintain, just, just to see if they're, I, I don't know if we're, we're allowed to do that, but to make it more complicated.
We've used them before in the past and, um, we, we could, but I, I, I think what companies that probably do.
It's fine.
Not a problem.
Yeah, if they are, if that's what you're comfortable with.
You know, we got.
Trust is, there's, it's hard to trust somebody with a car.
Yeah.
Much less to take truck.
Sure.
You do it your own, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
You do your own, with your own vehicle, it's hard to find a good, honest mechanic, you know? And, and it's, so, yeah, Rob needs to go forward, trust is the biggest issue.
Yeah, I agree.
Dean, do you have any suggestions while we're talking about this? Because you guys are busy already with your own stuff, you know?
Uh, we might keep, keep in mind, uh, other benefits we might derive from our Orange County Sand District situation.
I think it'd be good, if they're available, that'd be great. Who, are you going to make that contact, Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Do nothing, just.
Do we, just want to give Scott the authority to go with, or come back with us?
Yeah, yeah, just, just FYI, um, kind of what option do you prefer?
I have one question.
Dean, what, Arlene has a question.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm stopping everything from this. I just have one real quick question, I do. Um, you know. You know, you know, on the organic cans, is that, is there a possibility that we could send somebody out, say, once a month or twice a, probably every other month, just to clean off these organic cans? You know what I'm saying? In other words, they have a bowl, something that they would be washing it with real quick if the people wanted to?
Well, we, we were in our, in our video.
We'd have to put this under new business or something at the end.
I know that.
There are part vendors out there that can do, want to do that.
Or communications.
The drought too. We got a lot of black men in the video.
Yeah, yeah. Me, because we're violating the Brown Act. Less, it's.
Can I, uh, just interject something? Without bending the rules here a little bit, I think we're getting to something that's not listed on the agenda we might get in trouble with.
Okay, okay.
So maybe.
Good point, good point.
If we could talk about this at the next study session.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If you could agendize, I don't know, at the end of your agenda, Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are in the process of building cart washing vehicles, because we have one or two cities that want us to do it on a regular basis. So, uh, that's maybe, you know.
Maybe put that on the next agenda for the study session.
Maybe the next study session. Excellent. Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, then let's put that on the, that, it's.
Thank you. Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.
You were. You got your just.
Then the record would fight the director's now.
Probably just show up.
Sorry, sorry to do that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Ratted, ratted you out.
No, we have to follow the Brown Act, you know.
Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry, you can leave.
Yeah, you, you listen, I, I got my.
Okay. So.
We don't want to, I'll just call you.
You, you have direction then, I guess?
Yes, I do.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Um, we're on item number eight.
Thank you. Uh, it's good timing, I know the director, uh, Ooten, is here, because this was one of the issues he wanted to talk about, was the inflow reduction program. Uh, and so, um, for you, is, is an overview of our, uh, inflow reduction program. Uh, as you know, inflow is, is, is rainwater or clear water going into the sewer system. Uh, the, um, too much of, of that will inundate, uh, the treatment facilities at OCSD, and then that will, then will result in sewer water and wastewater being pushed back. And that's where you'll see the manhole covers with, um, you have SSLs. And it's a big concern of what the supposedly the mother mold, Elunios, which apparently we're not going to be getting.
No, no. It's supposed to hit on February twenty-eighth.
Is that what it is?
What, Elunio?
That's what they, that's what they said on the news this morning.
What's the over and under on that?
But obviously, it's a big concern with regulatory agencies, uh, about controlling the inflow. And so, uh, back in October, a production team, staff and myself, we had a big meeting on preparing for Elunio. And we believe the best course for preventing or reducing inflow is to seal and plug and seal manhole covers. Uh, as you see in the staff report, we have four thousand six hundred and fifty manholes. Prior to our meeting, we've already plugged, you know, we've been very proactive in this program by plugging over eleven hundred, uh, manhole covers. But after our meeting in October, we determined another eight, a little over eight hundred more manhole covers to be plugged and sealed, uh, which, which pretty much about half of the, of manhole covers to be plugged and sealed. Now, you don't want to plug and seal all of them, you know, those create, um, some gases in the system, hydro sulfides, so we don't want, we definitely still want to have some ventilation, so we don't want to plug all of them. But we think right now that the number of manholes that we have plugged and sealed will be sufficient to achieve the goal, which is, you know, the goal is to have a, a ingress of less than two percent, which is consistent with OCSD's goal. Uh, and as you see in the attachment, we've, as in, in January, we've had, uh, two significant storms. We, as, as Elizabeth mentioned earlier, we had the big storm first week of January, and then we had another one on, uh, January thirty-first. Um, and then you can see the, um, the report that Rob prepared for you, that basically anything, you need to have only an inch of rain to calculate the ingress. And based on so far in January, uh, we've been successful in moves that go up less than two percent. I also have attached, there's a bunch of maps, um, that we obtained from the city of Costa Mesa that are streets that are prone for flooding. So we identified where those manholes are located, and we made sure those are plugged and sealed, so that's part of the eight hundred and sixty manholes that were, were in the program. Uh, that concludes my presentation. If you have to answer any questions.
Does our staff do the plugging?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Who did these maps?
ETC.
I mean, I, I, when I was kind of scrolling through them, there are some obvious areas. I mean, for those that's been town for a long time, you know, we know the areas of flood. Um, some of them were kind of unusual. I know there was one over in my neighborhood that I had some questions on. I think it's, I think it's Iowa Street or where, yeah. But I, were these maps done in conjunction with what you just said, in terms of having to have an inch of rain?
No. These are just maps, the city identified areas that they knew flooded.
Yeah.
So we, we took that information and we created a map. We put that flooding information on our map. And then that allowed us to know which manholes to plug. So this is one of the benefits of a GIS system, is to be able to do nice-looking maps, and, uh, these are very helpful.
Good, okay. I'm just, there were some areas that I don't normally equate with flooding areas, but I'm glad we're being proactive with it. I think it's.
I, I was looking for Mesa Verde. I had a couple of friends that said, uh, people were canoeing on Mesa Verde in one of the storms, and, and it's not on here. So there was like, Mesa Verde has very, Mesa Verde Drive has very, oh, grainy. And I don't, I don't know, it'll go a long ways if it gets there, but, you know, so there's just some other potential opportunities.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we could draw a kayak on the street for the staff. I don't, I don't know where in particular it is, but, you know, there's, somebody had, took it, you know.
I, I know the areas that I've seen, especially like where Gibraltar enters out on the Giesler, there's a, there's a, there is a storm. Control grate.
Yeah, inlet, inlet, yeah.
That thing fills up with debris every time it rains. And I, the city doesn't always catch that one. But it's, it's funny where that part of the Gies, that part of Giesler kind of goes, it kind of goes like this, and then it goes back up, then it goes down the hill to the bottom, so.
What was the street?
It's on Giesler.
And Gibraltar.
Gibraltar. Or not, Ge, Labrador.
Oh, Labrador, okay.
Yeah. Mr. President, Director Ooten sent a few questions by email. I'm prepared to answer those if I can.
Go for it.
Thank you. So, uh, Director Ooten made a, made an inquiry with regard to Mendoza Pump Station. That's one of our pump stations. And how we calculate inflow is we compare the dry weather pumping runtimes with the wet weather, and the difference is the amount of water that's coming in from the storm. So these two storms on one six and one seven, unfortunately, either the rain gauge that I've used was not, was plugged, or there was a problem, but for the January thirty-first storm, I didn't get the data I'm used to getting from OC Watershed. So, the, the map here, or at the end of the last page of your attachment, we'll get to that in a minute. But with regard to Mendoza, as Scott mentioned, we plugged and sealed virtually every sewer manhole that is tributary to the Mendoza Pump Station. And the amount of inflow went down. It didn't go down as far as I hoped it would go down, but it went down. So here's how far it went down. The last time we had a storm about the same size as the one on January seventh, we had approximately a hundred and thirty-nine minutes of extra pumping at Mendoza. On the storm on January sixth, we had eighty-six minutes of pumping. And the storm on January seventh, we had a hundred and thirteen minutes. So it went from a hundred and thirty-nine to, say, eighty-six one day, a hundred and thirteen the next day. Well, that's a substantial difference. So that was a very well-done effort by the boys to plug and seal. However, there's still a lot of inflow, and we wanted it to go way down. So we did an additional investigation of the Orange County Fair property. We had written a series of letters signed by Scott, that the fairgrounds have these open areas that are tied to the sewer, and they're large. And that means rain just pours right in, and we just get it. The, they made some improvements, but not all the improvements. We're not even sure whether physically they can make all the improvements. Meaning, do they have somewhere downstream that they can pipe the areas that are getting the water? And I don't know the answer to that. So we are still getting significant inflow from the fairgrounds. And that was part of the area that was identified in Brown on OCSD major II study years ago. Lastly, Director Ooten asked, how do we calculate our II percent rain ingress? As Scott mentioned, we want to be below two percent. So how do we calculate that? Well, here's what we do. We have the runtime, dry weather runtime for a pump station, wet weather runtime. So we take four or five of the largest stations, calculate the difference between dry flow and wet weather flow. Then we take that percentage increase of our larger stations, and then we, uh, we proportion that over the whole district, assuming that areas where we don't have pump stations even get the same percentage of inflow. So that gives us the total inflow that we think we have. And then we divide that into how many inches of rain we had over the size of the district. It's a volume. X by Y by one point something inches equals the total volume of water. So we have the water we think that went in, the pump stations, by proportioning over the district, divided by the total rain, that's percent ingress. And these last two storms were point nine two percent and one point three percent, so we're certainly under the two percent that OCSD asks us to be. Uh, two percent is great. Point nine two and one point three is good, and a decrease in Mendoza is good, but we, we want better than that, so.
I have a, I have a question, Rob. When you talk about the fairgrounds, do you think that inflow is coming off of Arlington Street, or on the fairgrounds itself?
On the fairground side itself.
In their manhole covers?
Not just manhole covers. They actually removed and regraded a big, one of the big offending areas. But for instance, I have a few pictures, and.
Yeah, because Jim gave us a report, uh, about they're working on, they're, they're going to be working on Arlington Street.
That's swale.
That's swale right there. I thought maybe that might be a contributing factor.
Well, it'll have some effect.
I would think so, too.
I'll, I'll just run some quick pictures by you, just so you can.
You know, you're getting your pictures together. I was wondering, you know, that's state property.
Right.
How do we handle that? Because they can do anything they want.
I know.
But.
But, but we work, we work, we work close together with them.
If there's two, they have to follow the rules. We asked them not to have any inflow in that area. Look at the size of that. We did not see any improvements in there. That's a big area. This one is the.
It's kind of gnarly looking.
Yep. This is the equestrian center wash rack. They did put a cover over that.
They did, good.
So, good for them. And number three, this one here is the maternity barn wash rack for the sheep and goats. I know you'd be interested in that. We did not find any improvements over there either, but we're not sure whether they have downstream areas to drain into, which we have to check. These are, we asked them to, they have all these open cleanouts. Here's five cleanouts that have no cover. On Mesa Sol.
When were these pictures taken?
This week.
Oh, wow.
So, and this, they're all covered in a comprehensive letter from Scott to the fairgrounds. And we resent this letter to their current Assistant Chief Executive Officer a month ago.
Who's, who's that? Who's that, you know? Oh, Nick Bufer?
No, there's, it's a lady and a lady.
Oh, I thought Nick Bufer was the assistant.
Yeah, the general manager, the lady, and the assistant general manager.
Okay.
And then lastly, uh, this was the big area that they did regrade. So there's a, we made a major improvement in that area. So, well, let's put it this way, when we sent that letter to them, and sent it to their general manager and assistant general manager, didn't hear back. Didn't confirm they got it, didn't confirm they're working on it. Was like it went in a black hole. Kind of the same thing it did when we had been working with the engineer for the state property, the new engineer for the state property, Fairview House.
Yeah.
It's now the development center. So it's not easy, and.
Well, maybe Scott should personally make a phone call to the, the general manager, but, and, you know, he'd be.
Just get together.
He'd be agressive about it, but, you know, just ask.
It would be good to revisit with the fairgrounds what areas are still.
Or have Mike be calling.
What are bad.
I don't know.
Because they have made improvements, that, that would be a, a very, that's a beneficial.
And how can we be of help to you?
Exactly.
You know, we, because we could possibly be.
We've offered engineering, like, we'll look for you, like, you know, if they're going to put a storm drain in Arlington, am I correct in that?
Well, it's a bio-swell. It's going to enhance the swale.
It's a bio-swell.
With a bio-swell.
Okay, well, when you, when you do anything storm drain, this is the problem. There's no storm drain for these things. That's why they're going to the sewer.
Yeah.
So we should go to them and say, now's the time. Do your planning.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, I know.
All right, well said. Excellent suggestion.
Yeah, she's, she's pretty cooperative, so.
Hey, Rob, are, are these marks right here, are those manhole covers?
Those were manhole covers.
So what did they do?
They, they, uh, they took out the manhole cover and regraded and taped them. So, you know, you can have less manhole covers on a sewer.
Yeah.
When did they have RV? They have hookups now for the RVs in there?
Yes.
They do? I didn't know that.
Sure, they always have.
No, they always have electric, but they never had sewer.
All those, we asked them to put spring-loaded covers on those things, so that, you know, when they're open, they're open. But you can close them, and they're just left open.
Okay, uh, Mr. Moeller, you had, oh, I'm sorry, Director has a comment.
Which five pump stations do you use to do the calculation? Eldon Harbor, Victoria, and, well, last time I used four, Eldon Harbor, Victoria, and Mendoza. So you do use Mendoza, so it's probably the worst. Uh, yes, and, yes, Mendoza's the worst typically. And we also find that rain is not constant. There could be a cell that pours it right down on one spot, you know, fifty feet over, no rain.
Did that fence area built there? Mendoza? Remember you and I went over.
No, no, I don't think it did.
Yeah, they, they were going to put a, they kept asking us.
They, yeah, we budgeted.
All right.
Mr. Moeller, go ahead. Sorry, it's hard for me.
Thank you. I, it's good that the district's maps were updated with the city of Costa Mesa flooding information. I just wanted to point out that there are areas in, above the district's sewer system that are in Newport Beach, and it would be good to get information comparable from Newport Beach as to where problem areas are. This, this map from Newport Beach shows the city boundary, and the brown areas are, are areas that would flow into the district sewer system. And I believe the report mentioned that the Irvine Pump Station, near Mesa, the, and the Anniversary Lane was one of the problem areas. It's a low spot. I know from personal observation, the Twenty-third Street Pump Station, which I can see on my living room window, is a very low spot in the Irvine Avenue curves. And I have no idea about the.
When we include Eldon, that includes both Twenty-third, Santa Ana, and Irvine.
Yes.
So, that, those three stations flow into Eldon, so when we include Eldon, we are including the water that's getting in at Twenty-third, Irvine, and Santa Ana.
Yeah, yeah. But the, the point I was trying to make is that there are areas in Costa Mesa that are flat, but seem to have flooding, according to the maps that are out there. And I'm unfamiliar with this area of Santa Ana Heights, and, but I'm sure the city knows if there are streets there that flood during rain, and they would be flowing into the, into the manhole covers of Santa Ana, don't you think?
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's a, yeah, it's good.
Thank you for that information.
Very good suggestion.
Okay, anything else on the, the item?
No.
All right, thank you, good report, Mr. President. Uh, item nine, closed-circuit TV.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I know the board does not like typically taking directions or taking action, um, on study sessions, James, but I, I'm requesting, uh, this.
but I, I'm requesting this one favor to do so. Because, as you know, last, last, your board meeting, you approved the contract. You approved a contract for the closed-circuit television program. And we forgot to put in the agenda that, you know, we can have, we don't have enough money to perform the services, so you need to approve a budget transfer of $486,000, and that's what we're going to forward you today.
Any discussion on the item?
No, the table.
Second.
Motion in the second.
And that's over a few years.
Any other, any other questions or discussion? Call for the question. All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous, five to zero.
It'll be the same amount, I'm betting.
Yeah.
Item 10. Scott, if you don't mind, I'll just kind of jump in a little bit. Scott sent me a request last week. Is it last week?
Give it a second again.
Nalani received a letter from someone named Eric O'Donnell, who is a public affairs person out of Newport Beach, asking for us to present a certificate or resolution to the Mesa Water Board on April 14th. Mesa Water has exceeded their 20% mandated water conservation target, so this public affairs firm would like us to present a resolution commending Mesa Water on that date. Scott asked me what I wanted to do, and I said, I'm going to let everybody else know before I make a decision. Didn't we have a 70th anniversary last year? Did Mesa Water give us a resolution on their 70th anniversary? I didn't think so. So, board, with that, I'll let you guys decide what you want to do.
Well, I, I think we can, I'd take the high road myself.
I, I...
And go ahead and do it. I mean, that's the right thing to do. Whether they choose not to do the right thing is their prerogative.
I, I would just be facetious, but I, I agree.
How public relation-wise we should...
Can we put in there how much, you know, even absent all the pissing and moaning by their board?
We can certainly add that. I'm not sure how high that road is.
We could send them a tape to that.
Bitching and complaining, that never sends us a bunch of babies.
This should be deleted.
I'm sorry, Gina.
I can criticize if now my brother doesn't work there anymore.
What do you want, your proclamation?
Do, do we want to wait?
It's easier.
Do we want to wait till March, because?
Yeah, we bring it back.
I, I will reach out to you first week of March, once we have reached the final data numbers. Do we want to wait until they reach the final data numbers to make sure our proclamation is accurate?
This is cumulative, because they were, they were short a couple months.
I know, I know.
No, they, they met the cumulative number. Who hired the public?
I mean, that's...
Well, that was my question is, is Mesa Water's, is this firm been working with them? Sorry to put you on the spot, Gina.
Yeah, tell them, they're contractors.
Okay. Now, as far as their board meeting on the 14th, I may need one of you to step up and present that, because April 14th is kind of a red-letter day for me.
What, Valentine's Day?
It's my wedding anniversary.
Oh, my God.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure, caught between doing something on my anniversary or going to a Mesa Water Board.
They just sort of treat you.
Do your taxes.
Oh, no, my taxes are logged in before that, I hope.
I'm in Sacramento.
I have a golf match.
I'll do it.
I do.
Director Uten's...
And then I can read into whatever.
Yeah, but you'll be on tape.
Don't let him do it.
As we get closer to that...
That's a Friday.
Thursday, Thursday, it's a Thursday.
Thursday's on Thursday.
Yeah.
April 15th is on Friday, I know for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and formulate a resolution as we know the numbers. Okay, so that's your direction. Thank you all for bailing me out of that.
Are we the only presenter?
I don't know. We might be. Okay. And future study session items, anything anybody has to bring to Scott?
Just that one.
Just that one that Arlene brought up.
Yeah, good.
Which would be so nice.
About cleaning the trash cans, cleaning the organic cans.
This was organic cans. You know, just the idea of once in a while, coming around and being able to bring it for the residents.
Well, we have to talk about it later, because we didn't, it wasn't on the agenda.
And he said he has something he would add, too.
I, I think in light of that also, we need to have a discussion with CERNR, maybe at the same time, about the potential use of taking our trash to the Newport Beach.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Transport station.
I don't know, they, they were just waiting for the scales the last time we talked to them, so I don't know.
I think it's up to them to do the scales.
Yeah, they have to do it, because Newport's requesting it.
I think it, it's a contract, the contract needs to be short, and our costs need to be lowered, I think, as a result.
We may raise them, to make sure.
They may, they may consider it.
Also, we, we did...
I want to at least, I, I got the contract information at the board meeting a little bit of time that I bothered to show up about, there was a consent item that we were underpaying for the organic cans. Did, did Alan agree that we owed him the money, or was that your decision?
That was my decision to ask.
Yeah, then I want to check it out with Alan, because the language is not clear. It's basically with CERNR, we agreed to a new can charge of $9 and something. Anyway, something more. And then we went out into town halls, and, you know, Dean and Mike were there. And Scott presented information to the public that said we were only going to pay for the cans for the people who accepted the cans. You know, then we went out, and Javier and Lawrence went out, and they looked at multiple family housing, and they decided, well, 20% of the cans, you know, 20, there were some percentage of them that aren't going to get them because they don't have room for them, or, you know, whatever. It was, it was a logical criteria. So we started off not paying them for the residences that didn't receive cans. You know, and so I'm still, I still want to at least think that through. The wording in the, in the contract says, you know, organic cans, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't say per residential unit, which would have been, you know, favorable for the district. And it, it doesn't say, and there's no wording. So I think it can be, you know, what I wanted is a crafty lawyer to help me interpret that.
Should, Bob, should we do this at a regular board meeting instead of a study session?
Well, I, I don't care.
I mean, what do you think, Scott, would be, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we can do it offline with Alan, and if Alan says, you know, they're entitled to that money, you know, then I'll, I'll forget it.
Well, I was thinking Scott could ask him to research it, and he could give us a report on that topic.
Sure.
I mean, I think that would be a better way to go.
Okay, but I mean, you know...
That, that way you know for sure how, you know...
Yeah, so, either way, you know...
Because he does, Alan doesn't come to our study sessions unless they're requesting.
Oh, okay.
That's the reason.
That's a good idea.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't care if we do it offline or at a meeting.
Well, I, I think everyone, everyone would like to know.
Yeah, I can ask, I know, I know what Director Uten is asking. I can ask Alan to give us his interpretation of what it says.
Okay.
And I'll report back his findings.
Okay. I mean, it's not a great amount of money, but I think it's leverage that we can use, you know, with them with the, when they start taking our trash to the transportation, which the only reason for using it is, you know, they save money.
That, that could be something on the study session next time, see what the, what's, what position you're in right now. Because we've talked about that like three, four months ago.
Or if they are even considering.
Well, they were considering, they were just waiting for the scales, because that's part of the contract they have with Newport Beach, is to use that as, with the scales included.
So they have to do the scale.
Yeah, because they only, they have, they only use like half of the capacity right now.
Scales are, you know, they're just load cells.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they are, but...
Also, another one that I would like to see on the study session for us to discuss one way or the other is if we can get on the Chamber of Commerce list for, say, October.
Oh, for a presentation?
Yeah, presentation, just not the five-minute, but a real presentation.
Well, do we want to wait till October, or do we want to do...
No, you won't get it in October. You have to almost, you know, say...
I know, I know that, my, do you want to do it earlier than October is what I'm saying.
Oh.
If possible.
You don't want to do it during the summer, because a lot of people are gone.
Yeah, they don't even meet in Ju- July, I don't think.
So, you know, I, I just was thinking October, because...
An update of the program, like, organic program?
Well, organic, the way it is, and, you know...
Because you have to, you have to get on, plan ahead for those, because they get booked out.
The only thing, Arlene, is the people that come to those meetings are all businesses which we don't serve, for the most part.
But it's in the hope that we will be serving eventually.
Well, most of those businesses don't use our service, unless they live in Costa Mesa.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I mean, but it's a good presentation to them, though, like Scott always, that's a good job. Just an update on the organic program.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to hear what Scott says at that time.
I just want it on the agenda. If you want to put it, put me down on it, fine, but, you know, at least have it on you.
Yeah.
We wouldn't put you down on it.
Marlene, you're down on us.
I said it wrong.
The only thing I had is, I was at, at STRMA board meeting last week, and one of our topics was the Safety Claims Education Day in March, which hopefully we'll all be able to go to. I know I'll be there. You have free food, so, Bob, free breakfast and free lunch.
Is that, is that, is that in stock, lunch?
Yes, it's STRMA.
No, it's just the RMA.
Where's, where's that at?
It's in Newport Beach.
It'll be in Newport Beach, at Marriott.
What time of the day?
It's all day.
What's the date of that?
March 29th, I believe. There's a reception on March 28th in the evening, and then a... Is that, is that the time when they're scheduled for the STRMA board to tour our facility, or was that a different time?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't get any calls from STRMA.
Normally, once a year, we, as a board, visit one member district, and I thought that we were going to be the district that they were going to have the board tour.
You know, I don't know. I, you know, I've been in...
Well, and I may be confusing it with when they do the CSDA conference, so if you could follow up with that.
At Marriott?
One of you send a note to Alan and find out if March is when they're going to want to do the tour.
Is that a Friday, Bob?
Ellen Doughty.
Bob, is that a Friday?
Or Greg, either one.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, you sure?
Just a second, yes.
Well, it is a Tuesday.
March 29th is a Tuesday, right?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
Because we have a, the reception will be on the 28th at night.
Yeah, Monday night.
Okay, that's all I have.
Do you know where it is?
Yeah, the Newport Marriott.
Which one?
The one by the dunes, where they have a general... Used to be Newporter.
Yeah, it's Newporter Inn.
Off Cambridge.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Staff, anything? Anything for us this morning? Nice to see you. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn to our...
Do you want to talk to your boss?
Yeah, just, be the guy with the pink armband?
Yeah, what is that?